We're going to call the meeting of December 19th to order and begin as always with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and we'll start with any motions anybody might have?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we seal the minutes to the non-public meeting until such time as a majority of the board feels it is wise and prudent to unseal them.
Second.
Heard any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? All right, let's do the approval of the minutes from December 5th.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the adoption of the public and non-public minutes date December 5th, 2017, as printed.
Seconded by Larry Allen, favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along, we have scheduled business, the project update on the new fire rescue station, not much since last we met, right?
I spoke with Mike today, they finished the roof today, and the panels, replacement panels for the walls came yesterday. Not sure when he can start putting them on, but I'm sure he's going to be able to.
Still moving right along, right?
Yes.
The, I noticed the sign is item B on here, do we want to talk about that at all?
That's Larry.
Where?
Is Larry?
Whoa, 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 what sign?
Sign for Safety Complex.
Oh, we just, yeah, we just need to know what, what the board decides on what we're going to call it. Is it Newton Public Safety, Newton Fire PD, Newton, whatever you want to call it, but we need a name so we can start getting quotes for a name.
I think, personally, I think it's the Newton Public Safety Complex.
Chief has something to say.
Please come to the podium, sir. Your name and address for the record.
You should be, know by now.
Good evening. One of the recommendations was the town of Newton, Public Safety Complex.
Yeah, I like that.
That way there will be one sign for police and fire, instead of having one side of the road, town of Newton Police Department, one side of the road, town of Newton Fire Department.
We go blue-red.
So, I'm getting into this habit tonight, so if I was making a motion, I would say exactly as the fire chief just said, so town of Newton, Public Safety Complex.
But do we need a motion for that?
No, no.
I didn't think so.
No, we would agree on it.
Larry just needs to know the parameters.
And I like that as well.
The reason, I would like to talk. The reason for that is, as we're working on different signage?
Yeah. The fonts and all.
We can't say it's going to say XYZ, for quote on XYZ, we, the board has to make a decision on what exactly the board wants to call it, so when we work with the designers, we can tell them, this is the top of the sign, this is what the sign's going to say.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. All right, cool.
So you could pull the board, make sure we're all in agreement, and that's all he needs.
What a, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Anybody, that sound doable to everybody, at least for draft, plan sake?
Second.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Good.
All right, nobody's against it, Public Safety Complex it is.
So, C is, I assume these are the propane tanks over there, ownership of propane tanks?
Yeah, basically you need to sign off that the town owns the propane tanks. Should be the, was the first paper.
Signing it off for who?
Yep. The propane company.
Because you purchased the propane tanks from Palmer, so they're just saying that we own the tanks.
They're not.
They want to make sure that we know we own them and not leasing them, so we're responsible for any maintenance or repairs, correct?
Exactly.
Sounds good.
I believe just the chairman has to sign.
Oh, good.
I move that we authorize the chair to sign the propane tank ownership paperwork.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, moving right along.
Town assessor contract.
I can't see that.
Are you on the wrong date?
Yeah.
So, town assessor contract?
Ah, the contract really hasn't changed, it's the same amount this year as it's been in the past. We received a letter from, because she has to send the contract to DRA for their review, and this time they came back with maybe five, six different things in the list of what they wanted included, like her timeframe for completing certain projects, and who, who she's working for, so it spells out town of Newton with our address. So she fulfilled all those things, I've reviewed it, everything seems to be in order, so we're just looking for the board to approve it for another year and sign the sheet that's in that red folder.
And the compensation is the same as last year's contract?
The compensation is, yes.
I would move to enter into the contract with the assessor as written.
For 2018.
For 2018.
Second.
Thank you.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving right along to budget reviews, but before we do that, Chief El Cadenia, what's your topic tonight?
Washer and dryer.
Do you want to just do that before?
Whatever the board's comfortable with.
Why don't you jump on up, we'll...
So, he's under encumbrances?
He is, we'll...
It's on the list that he should talk about it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to him since he's here, so we can let him go.
It's, good evening. As the board is aware, we've been trying to get, purchase a washer, and, I don't say washer, a gear extractor and a dryer for the past few years. What I am asking is for the board to approve with the incumbent funds, minimum of the washing machine, I'm sorry, the gear extractor, forgive me for calling it a washing machine, it is a big, commercial washing machine that meets NFPA standards, they just call it a gear extractor. Ideally, if there was enough money remaining in our 2017 budget, we'd like to purchase both. As I am standing here now, I am confident that we will have enough to at least purchase the extractor.
And do you have an invoice or a quote or something?
You have, actually, you should have three bids for an extractor and three bids for the dryer.
Really?
So is there, is there a file in here that we should be looking at?
Yes, it's in there, it's, look under encumbrances.
Didn't see encumbrances.
No, no, sorry, in the red folder.
Oh, it's not on...
Did you have three bids?
Yeah, it's not in our meeting folder. Look for the, the one with the black thing, the incumbents, there it is.
Yeah, because there was three companies that we had.
We didn't see that.
All right, so, here's my, my main question, so it looks like the washer, including installation, is $6,109.
Correct.
And then, if we did go with the dryer, including installation, would be $7,165. So, this is going to be encumbered with existing funds.
Correct.
Where do the existing funds come out of? The million dollar question.
In order to encumber, you have to still have money in your department budget.
Right, so, what I've been told lately, unconfirmed, is that there are certain line items you cannot take money from?
Well, that, that's usually the rule of thumb, but...
But, past practice.
But, I mean, you know, as long as you don't overexpend your bottom line, and the board is approving the expenditure, we can, we can show one line item over expended and another one under.
The majority would come out of equipment.
What we try not to do is, is have things being approved that were never budgeted for in the first place.
Right.
That's where we get a little sticky.
So, I mean, me personally, I don't want to break the rules and have it, have egg on our face in an audit later, because my attitude with this and, and a lot of these kind of encumbered things would be, if, if you're taking it off the bottom line of the budget, and it's there, I really don't have a concern if it's something we really need. I just want to make sure we're not...
But you said equipment line, right?
The majority would be coming out of the equipment line.
Right, the majority.
Right, and where would the remainder come from?
It may, because I talked with Kim today, with the last payroll of the year coming in for this Monday, we don't know what's going to be available, we kind, she kind of thinks that the payroll might be up there, so what you...
Actually, for this payroll, as of, as we are standing here right now, we are less than $6,000.
Okay.
As we're standing here now, and we have four more days.
I believe there's approximately $20,000, so...
In your, but, yeah.
So what you could do, and what we normally do, is you can vote to approve if the funds are available. And if they don't get to do the both machines, they could do whatever is available at the bottom line to go toward the washer, because that's what he needs most.
Right, the reason, plus, there's a, a little thing in there, I believe, that you're saving $750, if we do it.
Yeah, yeah.
If you buy both.
Correct.
I think...
And they, we've talked to them, they do understand that if the board approves it, technically they'll have a purchase order, but the purchase order will not stand till the selectmen give the green light.
I think selectman Doug, it would like to be recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we encumber the amount of $13,274 for the police commercial washer and dryer.
Fire.
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 They're all set with their laundry.
They don't wash their clothes.
I was looking at the wrong sheet.
They don't get dirty.
Did you say if the money is available?
If I could finish.
I'm sorry.
Now that he has the right department, go ahead.
Second.
Did you guys get that? Because I didn't get the whole motion, so...
The, the motion is to encumber $13,274, provided the funds are available for the fire department to purchase the washer and dryer.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
I will have, for the town administrator tomorrow, boss, I'll have those other two companies that will clearly show that this is the one.
Okay, yes, yeah, okay.
I sustain.
Thank you.
Then, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, so we know, and I would move that we sign the requisition 2519, so that it is available.
That's a, a separate motion?
What's that for?
To sign the rec.
Second that motion.
Seconded by Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so you're, that's it for you?
It's it, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving right along to our budget review, we'll come back to the encumbrances, but let's go to budget review for the police department.
Good evening, Mike Jewett, police chief, thank you guys for your time tonight, I appreciate it. What you guys should have in front of you is my proposed budget for 2018. I tried to keep it as low as I could, in trying to keep it as a flat rate, I did end up increasing 1.09 percent. Some of that stuff was contractual. Part of the contractual that I went up on was the continuing edge education and the training line item. And I also, the travel, I went up in that this year as well. I can go down and break to each one, or if you guys have questions based upon what you have in front of you, I can answer those.
Go ahead.
Did we change the ACO salary?
I forget what happened at the meeting.
Was that a stipend?
It's a stipend.
Yes.
Was it that amount that's on there?
Believe so.
Yeah, the amount's the same. What we did is we took off the assistant ACO, that one's gone, that line item, but the amount for the ACO is still the same.
That's why there's a large overrun, right? Because we didn't have, we didn't have the ACO until the mid, middle of the year.
Towards the end of the year, correct?
So, the, and we'll talk about this in about five minutes, but the, the education goes up, and that's part of a, as you said, a contractual requirement?
Correct.
With the police chief?
Equipment purchases is going up, what are you planning on purchasing next year?
The equipment.
That you didn't purchase this year, that requires additional funds?
So, under the equipment purchase, the reason why that went up, it went up $3,800, and that's for the, to, for the payments for the TASAs that we have for the next five years.
Okay.
That's, that was going from that contractual thing to that for equipment.
So, is a lot of this equipment purchase, these are ongoing payments that's coming out of it?
The $3,800 will be an ongoing payment, that's an annual payment to TASA.
Right, but the other $10,400?
That's just in general. This year, I think I'm down to $58 in that line item.
Yeah, you're actually over.
I don't think you're on the same line item.
Equipment purchase?
I'm looking at 2018 police department budget, row 11, equipment purchase.
He's over 119.
He's over 119?
He said something about $3,800.
Yeah, that's the increase over last year's, over this year's budget.
Budget variance.
All right, I gotcha, sorry.
You're actually, you had a 11920, is that what you're talking about?
That's the overage, yeah.
Overage, yeah.
So, I, I'm just asking the question, because I think of equipment purchase as a one-time kind of purchase, you know, so what you purchased this year, you're not purchasing next year.
Correct. This past year, we bought a lot of the ballistic vest, I still have some offices that don't have the updated one. I've got one, the new full-time officer that we approved the last time around, we still need to buy him a vest. And it's just different equipment that comes up every year, to outfit different cars for cones and that type of thing, that's where that money goes to.
Okay, that's why I kind of needed to, you know, why is it just because you've got a new purchase, this has to increase, I mean, it should come out of what you had, because you're not purchasing what you purchased this year. Follow me?
I understand.
Larry?
On your copy of contract, when does that expire?
Not for a few years, I don't think.
I think that was just renewed.
It was just renewed.
It's the same company that we use downstairs?
Yep.
Jim, did you...
Well, Mike, mine, right above the copy of contract is computer line, you spent $3,044 so far this year, and you have almost $2,000 on expended.
So, are you looking at 4210313?
313, yeah.
Line 6.
So that, I, I just purchased a laptop for the new SUV, so that money, that should be taken off of that, I'm not sure if it reflects on what you guys have there.
This is as of 12/19, today.
Is it really as of 12/19?
Yeah, Kim updated it today.
Yep. Has that one, probably hasn't hit yet, right? The new laptop?
Yeah, the new laptop was 2005/30.
I was just, I was wondering, do you have a plan in place for annual computers, or...
My booking computer, right now, is offline, it's been there since before I was there, so as last, this year, we bought two new computers, next year, I plan on buying a new computer, and the laptops need to be updated continuous, we still have two laptops that are running XP, and they really shouldn't be.
Okay, are you working with the town's IT?
No, we have our own IT that we use through the high school.
Yeah, I was going to mention that.
Yeah, remember the, we've had this conversation before, these, it's Kingston, Kingston Town Hall Police, Sanborn, Fire Library and RPD, but our town has not.
Yeah, the school already has IT people.
I was just looking at, if it's an annual expense of $5,000, with the computer equipment that's being purchased by the department, that just seems to be a very large number considering the rest of the town's computer expenditures.
I think part of that would be with the laptops and the cruises, I mean, it's 25, over $2,000 per car for a laptop, so, I mean, the laptops are expensive, the, you know, the workstations in the PD, so, the server, there's, you know, it's almost its own, own entity of computers that are over there, we probably have more computers than Town Hall has.
Yeah, and I, in the, they're a bit more ruggedized, right?
Yeah.
The laptops, yeah.
All right, I have a couple more questions for you.
I'll do my best.
Facilities expenses.
Yep.
No money was budgeted, no money is being requested for next year, however, we did expend $1,800 this year.
Correct.
Against no money. So, what was that, and why do we not anticipate needing funds for next year in that line item?
That line item was aired out, I think, two years ago, by the board. That, I don't have any money for facility use, what that $1,800 was, was the exterior lighting on the building, we did the, that was a, well, a few months ago that we did the outside lights, that was new lights inside the Sallyport when you first come into the PD, those burnt out, we changed those.
Should that be coming out of general government?
We paid for some of the lights outside, so I don't know what this is either, I have no idea.
This is why I'm confused, it, it was zeroed out because facilities is part of the general government budgets.
What are you showing that come out of it?
Facilities expenses, 4210355.
Middle of your first sheet.
Line 12.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we're on the same thing, because I have, facility, I have zero across mine.
I show, under year-to-date expense, it's 182349.
Yeah, we all have it.
We've got the spreadsheet from Grace, and Kim just plugged the numbers into this format, because she didn't have this format.
So that 1823 come out of your budget?
Did which one?
Did that 1823 come out of your budget?
I have no clue.
Well, yeah, it shows it came out of his, it shows it.
But general building funds paid for that.
Well, it depends, I mean...
Well, it doesn't look like it.
We don't really know what it is, but every time they wanted lighting, we came to the board and got the board's approval, so that would have been under general government buildings, so I don't know what this is.
So this might be something that shouldn't even be showing up as a year-to-date expense under this.
I'm not seeing it on my end.
Which means it, yours is effective as of, your copy is effective as of?
The 19th tonight?
No, ours, his, his copy.
Hopefully it's the same.
So you're looking...
Speaking in general terms of general government buildings, we probably should be vigilant in capturing all this stuff as we go throughout the year, whenever it comes forward into the buildings account.
Yeah.
I don't, I think we did that for a reason, you know, so, I think, more than likely what happened is we saw this come across our desk, and we were just like, oh, it's a, it was needed in a hurry, really, and we signed it, and, and it's gone, but...
Yeah, but we may not necessarily seen which account it actually came out of.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is we just sign it and go, so...
Given the number that I saw, the 1823, I, I went down and purchased the lights on the PD's credit card.
Yep.
So I'm not sure if it was getting double documented.
Yep.
I'll have to pull that line item, I don't have it to show.
I think...
So I can't really answer that one, and I apologize.
I think it's a good catch for our, our practice going forward, but either way, I, it doesn't affect this budget too much, because...
So it should still be zero, well, I was just checking, because if you're having expenses against facilities, do we need to budget for it?
Yep.
And, no, we don't, because it should be general government, and this 1823 shouldn't be here, so that clarifies that.
So I would ask, could you guys just check with Kim to find out where it went, and I would also say that the Butler Building, same thing, same project, make, make sure the Butler Building goes, is going through the right, I, I don't know where else the Butler Building would have been charged to, but it should be...
I believe it all went under general government, and when I saw this today, I was thinking it was maybe cleaning supplies or something, and I had the same question, because we deal with the general government, we don't know exactly.
And I'll, I'll look into it on my end to see what it is, cleaning supplies for us shouldn't come out of, wouldn't go underneath that.
Right, right.
So, I'm curious to myself to what it is.
So I'll check with Kim tomorrow, and then...
We'll talk tomorrow on it.
Cool. You have another one?
Yeah, and I have another one, again, zero money was budgeted, money was expended, zero money being proposed for next year.
Which one are we looking at?
And this is the catch-all line item budget, called other expenses.
Love that one.
Which are typically frowned upon, if at all possible, because it's a catch-all.
That's a 66648?
That's the one.
Lucky 666.
And again, I wish I had an answer for you, I don't know what that is.
Do you have money in your spreadsheet there?
Um...
Or is your zero's all...
It's all zeroed out, so I don't know what that is.
Yeah.
And it may be just the way that the book, the office manager's putting it in, but, yeah, we don't have an other line, I talked to a couple board members, I think, in, in the past about another line, yeah, so I'll, I'll find out what exactly that other is, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, we were looking at it last week, and there was zero straight across another, so, I don't know.
So it's just looking at things to see that, you know, we're expending things where we're supposed to be expending, and...
No, I appreciate it.
Ah, let's see, I thought there was one other, if anybody has anything else while I'm looking for this.
Chief, you said you use the, the school IT people?
Correct.
Why, here, $13,500?
That's, that is our, we use IMC, which is the information management system, that's the, we have to pay them annually, maintenance and upgrade fees and all that stuff, that's where that money goes to, that's why that one's so high.
Got your police software?
Yeah.
There's a limit to what the, the school can do.
Yeah, they, well, the IMC is a standalone company, that's the, you know, I think you guys...
That runs your laptops when you put in car plates and all that?
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe you should just change the name of it, it looks like IT consulting.
Yeah, it falls under IT, but I mean, I can add that to something else.
Okay, I have my other item.
Shoot.
Travel.
Yep.
This year, we budgeted $1,500.
What line item leave?
This is line 38.
38, okay.
So we budgeted $1,500, you spent $59375, which means you have not spent $900 yet, and yet, you're asking for double that amount for next year? Are we anticipating additional travel for next year?
We are, the, in, in my contract, I'm allowed, it's, I'm contracted to go to that IACP conference, the next one is in Florida, so that's going to be airfare, hotel, rental car, and all that stuff, based upon what I saw for amounts of money, what it was going to cost me to get down there at this time of year, rental car and hotel, that's why I increased that one, to cover that.
Okay.
I thought that was mileage.
Yeah.
I'm not driving down there.
Well, I, I thought it was a lot for mileage, and then, you know, to only expend a third of what was budgeted this year, and then to ask for double, not double what you expended, but double what you budgeted.
Yeah, the conference will absorb up a lot of that.
There's a conference next year that there isn't this year, and that's why the travel expense is, it's in there, conference that you did not attend this year.
I did attend it this year, but it was much closer, I drove.
Oh, the conference was closer this year, it's held in a different location next year?
Correct, next year it's in Florida.
Thank you.
So this year was in Philadelphia, so I drove.
Justification for the additional, that's what I'm looking for, is the explanation.
The other one didn't start yet, right?
Larry?
On your vehicle lease, that's for two cars, right?
I wish, but no, that's, that's one car, we got the car late in the year, that would have been the two payments for that vehicle, but because of the time of year we got it, we only made the one, one payment on it.
But at the end of next year, you're not going to have $7,000 left over.
No, I believe that will be paid, two payments to them.
All right, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that we include the proposed police department budget in the town's proposed budget.
I will second that, and I will also like to say that, as much as I've questioned all of your numbers, I am happy to see that the bottom line is an increase of less than $7,000.
Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, as I tell everybody, unfortunately, you're one of the big three with the budget, so we might be talking to you in January sometime. But, as Lisa said, we appreciate the, it's basically as flat as you could probably get it without risking some, the inability to fund certain important things for the town. I'm going to jump around here on the agenda while we have you here and figure encumbrances. Want to talk about yours?
So, a few months ago, I came to you guys about the Motorola radios that we were trying to purchase. Motorola offered to give us those radios at fifty percent off plus free installation. It's taken me some time to get the information that I needed. So, I did a couple different requisitions for incumbent funds for those radios. The total on the radios, the purchased ones we're looking for, without interest, was twenty thousand eight hundred and fifty-one fifty. What I did is, the first encumbrance that I did was for the first lease payment, if we leased them for four years. The second encumbrance I did was for the full amount, the twenty thousand eight fifty-one. And the reason I did that with the encumbrances is I think, giving line item to line item, I have enough money in the budget to pay the full amount, but I wanted to give the board a couple different options of ways that, you know, we possibly could go, depending on which route you wanted to do. In total, at the end of the year, I have enough to do it. There's a couple line items that I've been told that we kind of stay away from, so I'm kind of throwing it out to the board to see which direction that we, you know, that you'd like me to go in on that.
So, it's a similar conversation to the one we just had with the fire chief, right? If he's got it in the bottom line of his budget, then that's what we would, if we made a motion, that's what we'd do to take it out of there. But, go ahead.
Okay, there's an option for payment in full or for lease. Now, the lease agreements proposed, does that include an escape clause?
Yes, it does.
You knew I was.
I made sure of that. It's in there. There's no early termination fee or any early fee if we paid it off early. So, it was quite lengthy, and we knew that it was going to be lengthy ahead of time. It took several months to get it.
It's clause five on the non-appropriation of funds. Clause five on the non-appropriation of funds.
My opinion is if we have the money, let's just buy it and get it over with.
I do agree, if we have the money, and if we don't, then we know we have the lease option as, so we could encumber, say, the seven thousand instead of the full amount if that's all he has available at the end of the year. So, it's a good option to have, and I'm glad you came with that second option.
Well, I just wanted to make sure you guys, whatever options we could possibly do.
So, anybody want to make a motion?
So, just so it's clear, the radio amount will be taken from the radio line, that line will be over expended, but the bottom line will be fine. That doesn't go in the salary line, just so that you understand that.
Right, and it can't go into the salary line, because it's not salary.
Right, okay.
Right, but that differs from what you just told us ten minutes ago.
No, I said, you know, you usually put it in the line item, like in this case, Chief Alcindino had equipment line. That line can be over expended, but, you know, the bottom line won't be. But you can't put radios into the salary line, you have to post it on the appropriate line.
It's like the facilities that they spent eighteen hundred dollars with zero money available. Or the other expenses, it's the same thing.
I'm just, I'm just, my concern here is I'm getting, it sounds like differing things to me.
Well, maybe, you know, I'm not.
Yeah, because my understanding is that we, and I agree with you, if you had, you know, six thousand dollars in the radio budget, it'd go there first, we'd take that, but then the fourteen, for example, fourteen thousand would come off the bottom line of the rest of the budget.
Well, but it's got to be posted in that budget.
What's going to happen, my understanding?
On that line item.
So, this is how I see it. What'll happen is, radio will be over expended, salary will be under expended, the net will be within budget.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned about the line items, I'm just, from what you just said, it sounds like salary is impenetrable, like we can't touch salary at all.
No, what I think what the, all it is, is that you can't say, from the, say, the salary was ten thousand you had left, and you needed five for the radios, you can't go to salary and say, hey, I'm going to take five thousand out and then go to radios. No, what you do is you just say, under radios, I'm going to take ten thousand out, leave the salary the way it is, and now you're over budgeted on the, on the radio, but it's still, the bottom line still comes out.
And that's, that's fine with me, if that's, if you guys are telling me we can do that.
Yes.
It comes out in the wash the way.
Yes, exactly.
We don't like to make a habit of it, but as long as the funds are there, you can make that judgment.
Yeah, I get a little concerned when you say, we don't like to make a habit of it.
Well, I mean, we've had, in the past, we've had a lot of money, say, appropriated for health insurance.
Yeah.
They over appropriated it, knowing they didn't have all family plans, and then they would dip into that to use it. That's, you know, that's different. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but we don't have any slush funds in these budgets.
But, I mean, you got the best price and, you know, it works out that you can do that.
And because of his staffing challenges this year, there actually is extra funds in the budgets.
Really, what it comes down to me is, I just, I'd like to see kind of the letter of the law stating what we can and what we can't do. I understand what you're saying when you say, we don't like to make it a habit, but typically, if it's stuff that's going to cause us issues in an audit or something like that, and I don't want to do it.
Yeah.
But Jim, you're trying to say something.
The only alternative, and it's a much more complex process, is we have the ability to do line item transfers. However, quite frankly, our bookkeeper has a lot to do. Line item, trying to keep track of line item transfers, maintain paperwork, make sure, making sure DRA sees that, DRA would rather see one line over expended, one line under expended, the bottom line hasn't changed, because that's what we're charged with, than see sheet after sheet of what, I mean, we'd spend nights here just doing line item transfers.
And if you were never able to over expend a line item, every town would have issues.
Right, right. Alrighty, so.
So, the motion will read, allow the police department to purchase the Motorola radios for twenty thousand eight fifty-one fifty, providing there's money left over in its 2017 budget.
Second.
Alright, discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, you just might need to add that. Motion to encumber.
Motion to encumber the twenty thousand.
For the purchase of.
Yeah.
With the purchase of the Motorola radios.
And that's what I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I make another motion?
Yep.
Yes.
I'd like to make an alternate motion. If funds aren't available to purchase them for twenty thousand eight fifty-one fifty, I'd like to make a motion to encumber five thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-eight cents for the lease agreement of the, of the radios.
For payment number one.
For payment number one.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's just in case.
Right, Jim, what I did is I encumbered the first payment in case there wasn't enough to purchase them.
So, either way, he gets it.
I didn't quite understand what you were saying there, but we just caught them all right.
Well, either way, he'll get the radio.
It's contingent on insufficient funds for the full purchase.
All right, and, all right, that's it for the encumbrances for you, right?
Correct.
But while you're here, before you leave, I'm going to, Jim, can you give me that a second? So, for those who have been paying attention in town, the police chief's contract actually expires tomorrow for December twentieth, 2017, was the last day of that contract. We've, Chief Jewitt has been our chief for about a year and a half now, right? So, he's done an excellent job, we're happy with the marriage, I think, and hopefully, he's happy with the marriage because he signed our proposed new contract, which is going to start on December twentieth, 2017, and will be a three-year contract. So, hold on just a sec, Jim. So, I like where you're going, but hold on just a sec. So, we, we've been negotiating, and we're looking forward to continuing to work together, and we're glad the chief is, so at this point, I'll ask for Selectman Doggett, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we ratify the contract with the police chief and agree to the articles stipulated therein.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we will sign that, and then.
You're stuck with us for another three years.
Exactly, so we need you to go see, at some point, the town clerk to get sworn in again, so. And, but, other than that, congratulations and.
Thank you. Pleasure working with you guys.
There's only one signature on there so far. As soon as Mr. Burrell has signed it.
Then we'll be good at that point.
He doesn't get to take that tonight, Jim, we have to make copies. He doesn't get to take that.
Oh, no, 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 but he wants to make sure that it gets signed.
Oh, okay.
Before I said anything that was inappropriate.
Yeah, invisible ink.
Make sure it's not a red pen.
All right, form signed, you're good.
All right, so, I think that's it for the PD, right?
One more.
Sure.
Since I'm newly reappointed, one more thing.
Well, we haven't signed it yet, so be careful.
Hold on there, Bob, don't.
PTO time. I'm assuming this is the correct forum to talk about that?
Correct.
I didn't hear.
Correct.
Okay, I have two offices that have PTO time that I'd like to see if we could carry over into next year. There was a couple different reasons, I can give the explanations, I know you guys, we don't give names for whose they are, but I can give explanations to why that wasn't done.
Are these full-time employees or part-time employees?
Two full-time.
Okay, good, so that solves one problem, part-timers cannot carry over.
Part-timers don't get it.
And they have not maxed out banking of PTO at this point?
Do they max it out? No.
Okay, because full-time employees are only allowed to bank up to X number of hours per year, up to a certain amount per lifetime.
Correct.
And is it more than eighty hours for either of these employees?
One is under eighty, one is over eighty.
Okay, because the policy states they can bank up to eighty hours in a year.
Bank or carry over?
Bank and then carry over, I don't recall the actual carry over. Now, if they're carrying over more than eighty hours, that would, and how many hours do they have regularly?
Depends on how many years you've been on.
No, I mean, these particular employees. Let's assume they have two hundred hours, and they're going to bank eighty, that means they'll, I mean, carry over eighty, that means they'd have two hundred and eighty hours to attempt to use next year.
Correct.
And if they had a problem using two hundred this year, are they really going to be able to?
They should be able to, one of the reasons, one of the offices wasn't able to use it is he was in the full-time academy for three months. He was accruing his time while he was in the academy, but however, those three months made him ineligible to take PTO time, plus when he came out, he was on an FTO program, which kept him from using that.
Understandable.
Yeah, it is, I just wanted to take.
He also had a shortage of manpower they shared too, right?
Correct, we were able to get, you know, we're doing good right now, but we did, we were short a few full-time offices.
In case anyone's interested, the personnel policy is in our shared folder at the moment for the meeting.
So, let's try this a little differently. So, you have, is it for two employees you have?
Two employees, yep.
Two employees, so the first employee X is requesting to carry over how much?
I believe it is fif, just about fifty hours.
So, do we have a issue with employee X carrying over fifty hours?
I'm just making sure we're following policy. All right. May be carried over with two exceptions, new employees, they're not new employees. Second exception is when special circumstances have prevented an employee, so it may not unless there are special circumstances, you are providing us with the fact that there were special circumstances that prevented them from using their PTO. So, yes, upon written request, do we have a written request for those carryovers?
We do.
Excellent.
To one, and then I don't know if you want to talk about the other one.
And there's no limit, apparently, on carrying over PTO.
So, let me.
Actually, there is, but it's in state law, it's not in our.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what I'm saying, our policy is not.
I make a motion for employee X to carry over fifty hours of PTO into 2018.
Was it fifty exact?
I think it was like fifty point five or something like that.
Fifty point five.
And Diane has the name in front of her, right? You can get it from Nancy.
Nancy has it.
Nancy's going to pass it to you, so X will be replaced with the employee's name.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor?
We need, aye.
They don't say, they just, they have the name, but they don't have the hours.
Yeah, because they're public employees, and this is considered a type of compensation, is actually public knowledge.
All right, fine, I was just trying to be a little extra.
Otherwise, the bookkeeper has no idea who employee X is.
Well, it's going to be in the minutes.
So, the names aren't on it?
I just didn't want, I just didn't want to be on TV talking about it, I thought it'd be a little extra.
It should have been on the, on the request.
Aggression.
Employee ID would be nice, do we have that?
The name is on here, but not.
Oh, not the hours.
Right, this one has the hours.
Is the employee ID on there?
The name is on here.
What about the employee ID?
There's no ID.
Let me put it this way, you have what you need, right?
I need the hours, it's got to be in writing.
What are the hours?
I'll double-check it with the cross-reference, what I have.
Send me another letter.
I'll send you an updated one.
A written letter with the number of hours.
Employee A, I have the name and the hours.
Okay.
And how many hours are we talking about?
On employee A, it's a hundred and forty hours.
Wow, and what are these?
Hold on just a sec, are we off of the last employee yet?
Yes, yes.
So, I, I'm losing consciousness. Did I call for all in favor? I don't think I did.
You made the motion.
Not on fifty and a half.
Larry made the motion, I seconded, aye.
Aye.
Fifteen halves taken care of.
So, your first one is done, moving on to number two.
Employee A has a hundred and forty point zero hours of PTO time remaining.
One oh four or one four oh?
One four oh.
Forty.
One four oh.
That employee has been here a long time.
What are the special circumstances that prevented the employee from being able to utilize their PTO this year?
Can we discuss the employee's name?
If the employee doesn't mind.
No, I don't.
So, let me kind of cut to the chase here. So, what's your main concern?
Oh, is it?
That.
That we're following policy.
Okay, so I just, somebody just passed me the policy, the policy says, policy says eighty hours, is that correct?
No, 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 carry over right here.
That's for the bank, I think.
Banking, yeah.
That was for banking, this is carry over, it just says, there's only two exceptions to not carrying over. One is if you're new and it's your first year.
Yeah.
The second is if there are special circumstances that prevented them, and then the Board of Selectmen may approve carrying the time into the next year.
So, as a department head, do you feel as though there were special circumstances?
I do.
Without telling us, you know, you're the department head, and you do, so.
Okay. Okay.
This was brought up earlier in the year, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and we have the written request to do the carryover, correct? All right, then I would move to allow the employee to carry over their remaining 140.0 PTO hours into 2018.
So, no bank at all?
No, this is just carry over.
Well, you're carrying over, isn't it going into a bank?
No, 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 carry over means they have to use it next year, or they'll be coming before the board at the end of next year, and we might have a little problem with the special circumstances at the end of next year, provided we're, I'm here again, you know.
But are you still a good second with that? I think it was Bob, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, so Bob was the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. That was an aye, Jim? Sounded like a...
Reluctant.
A reluctant aye, but it was still an aye.
But the way I see it, the PTO time, it's still the same amount of hours for this employee for the year. The chief has to work with this PTO schedule, and he has to make sure that he can cover it in his budget.
Yep.
So, I'm sure he's done his due diligence, he's sure that he can do it, and, you know what, the person was unable to use it, the other option is to pay him outright, and we don't wanna do that either.
So, are you, I think that's it, right?
I'm good, unless employee A, they wanna send a check to, that's...
Actually, that's one of the reasons that, when you start talking numbers like that, people that carry over time and build up and accrue, and suddenly, well, gee, the stuff that you earned when you were making X number of dollars, where now, you're using it now at 2.5%, 7.5%, 10%, higher rate of pay than when you earned it.
This is why banking becomes an issue.
Well, that's the banking and that's the carryover, I really, I have no idea who this person is, but you really should look at somebody and go, you know, you really should take some vacation time.
And force them taking their...
I will force that person to take the time off.
But that's no different anywhere else.
I'm gonna, I think we're getting a little more philosophical rather than, so, if you're all set, thank you very much, Chief.
I'm good, thank you.
And we'll move on to our, we'll go back to budgets now, and move on to the town assessor budget. 2018 assessing budget is, looks like what it says here.
Should be status quo of last year.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we add the assessing budget as presented to the town proposed budget.
The contract?
Second.
Yes.
That was the budget, yeah, I'm sorry, the contract is something different.
All in favor on this one?
Aye.
Okay, moving along to, looks like general government buildings.
This one's a tough one, this one's kinda the catch-all for everything, and, I don't know if you want to do the landscaping contract first, because I've put that figure in here, I know Jim had some questions about it.
Yeah, refresh my memory, we had the contract, and Jim, you were gonna crunch some numbers on it?
Well, I had questions regarding the differential between the proposed 2018/19 con, or 2018 contract and the existing 2017 contract. I found out the differential was actually a mathematical error on the part of the vendor, and, in 2017, we got some services that we shouldn't have, that should've cost us a little bit more, it didn't because of the vendor's mistake.
Oh, yeah.
Can't fault somebody for correcting something in the next version of the contract.
So, you're good with the numbers now, or...
Yeah, they make a lot more sense. I saw the lodge differential, and then, in talking with the bookkeeper, found out that there were some lawn mowings that were in the contract, but not in the contracted money.
So, do we wanna, while we're here, do we wanna motion on that?
Yeah.
What are we on, landscaping?
Yeah.
Do you want a motion on the...
Landscaping is a separate?
Yeah, let me find that.
I think it's in the folder, though, right?
Yeah, it's in the...
Online?
It's in the red folder.
On the red folder.
'Cause you had already gone through it, so...
Yep. Granite Coast.
So, you have two contracts, one for all the town properties, and then one for this public safety complex, which is separate.
But that's included in the grounds maintenance summer, like I had?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's where I was, I'm like, I don't see a landscape.
Yeah, yeah.
So, here are the contracts, if you wanna...
Mr. Chair, I would move that we sign the contract with Granite Coast Landscapes for the 2018, 2020 years, it's a multi-year contract, where the amounts remain the same.
There an escape clause with that?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
And, when I hear multi-year, I look for the clause.
The annual cost per year is $31,740.
There a second?
That's only one portion.
Right.
I think he's gonna do two.
Okay, all right, I second that.
Okay, all in favor on that one?
Aye.
It's everybody next?
And that, included in that motion is that the chair will sign the contract.
Yep.
The second one is the landscape management contract with Granite Coast Landscapes for the property known as the Safety Complex at 8 Marmack Road. The annual cost, just for one season, which is 2018, is $4,700.
No.
And with the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
I think it's $7,500, Jim. $4,700.
$4,700.
Annual cost for 2018 is $4,700, according to this.
Seven or two, Diane?
There's nothing for it.
It's highlighted. Eight monthly payments of $5,875.
That's for the landscaping, for the...
For the police, so, what...
For the safety complex.
For the safety complex.
Right, it's...
To cut grass?
It's for spring cleanup, fall cleanup, and lawn maintenance, $100 per service.
Right, and fertilizer.
With 29 most for the season.
So, that covers, that covers this. Now, the new area that we're not sure about, that was another $2,800, so, there's no contract for that, that's what the difference is?
Oh, okay.
There's no contract.
Yeah, and landing zone expense was removed from the last contract.
Well, that's, there, it won't be a contract.
In this contract differs, there's no longer a landing zone expense, since the fire station building is now where the landing zone used to be.
Correct.
Less to mow, so, that did decrease.
Right, at this minute.
Landing zone's gonna be more to the right.
Right, however, this isn't just for the police station, this is for the safety complex, so it would, it would be all mowing on that property, including any grass.
No, no, this is, that $4,700 is just, we called it the safety complex because we didn't wanna just call it police station. It's just what he's doing now, basically.
Which is where the PD is.
Right, we don't have a contract for anything else, because we're unsure what that would be.
That's the PD contract for their landscaping.
Yeah, if you wanna do it that way, sure.
And then there's an additional $2,800 for the fire station, around the fire station, and that's where there is in the contract, 'cause we don't know how many mowings that will be, we're gonna do one year and see where we go.
Okay, so we don't have a contract for that $2,700?
Because we don't know what we're gonna mow.
He's not gonna cut his own grass anymore?
No.
Not once he's over there.
So, I've got that $2,800 in my general government's building budget. If you wanna look at this, can you...
There's just no contract to sign or vote on, so that's just part of the regular budget.
Behind the fire station, isn't it mostly gonna be pavement?
We don't know.
So, the motion is strictly for the $4,700 or whatever it was, because that's all we have a contract for.
Correct.
Jim, look at the second page of that, 'cause that's the other $2,800.
So, he's just estimating what he's gonna be cutting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Gonna be doing some...
But we're, we are agreeing to this amount of work for this amount of money.
Correct.
For one year.
For one year, right.
We don't know the amount of work.
That's why the $2,800 is not a contractual.
Right, there's no contract for that work, there's only a contract for this work.
The ones we know.
We can negotiate that one, once the building's done.
Exactly, that's what he recommended, because he's not sure what's gonna be, need to be mowed at this point.
But I have to put it in the budget if you're gonna negotiate with him.
That's fine, you can put it in the budget, but...
Okay, that's what I wanna make sure of.
We don't know how much tar is gonna be around there, right?
Yeah, it kinda does, doesn't it?
Goodbye to Chief, a riding mower this time.
I would be curious to know why the mowing around the new fire station building is 50% higher than the mowing around the police station?
Why is it...
'Cause it's $100 per mow, and $150 per mow.
'Cause last year was $150 per mowing all over the place, we paid $150 for a service. He doesn't know what he has to do at this point, so, he's figuring he's gonna be spending, he doesn't know if we're gonna be spending another two hours there or not. So, we don't know how much time is involved either, so he's going to at $150, and assuming that it's gonna take him over two hours to mow anything extra. It's all, it's an estimate at this point.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying? He's guessing, we're guessing that it's gonna take him an extra two hours, two people, to mow the extra area.
Your motion still, I think you've finished it.
The motion has been made, I'm not gonna rescind it, however, I'll be glad when we put this up.
That's not in the motion.
Exactly, that's not in the motion, and...
Did you second?
I did.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
So, we including the $2,800?
Well, that's, that's in the, that's just in this budget, we don't have a contract for the $2,800.
So, do you want me to keep it in the budget, the $2,800?
That's, that's why we voted on these to begin with, so, I think, and we skipped down to these, is what I'm saying, so I think we should keep the $2,800 in the general government budget.
Okay, because I would anticipate we'd get some kind of contract or agreement or whatever, that we can actually agree on, maybe...
This year, you will not get another contract for that, because we don't know. That's why it's only one-year contract. Once the building is finished, we know exactly what we're mowing.
So, he's...
2018, we'll sign a new...
He's on demand, so he is on demand.
Correct.
And he's going to bill us for actual hours worked.
Yep.
$150 per service.
And then, $150 per service or per actual hour? 'Cause you said that he doesn't know how much time he's, and it's an estimate.
He doesn't, it's a hundred... I believe it says $150 per service.
But you also said that was an estimate.
Well, he's, right, he's estimating that that's his going rate for two hours.
Right, but if he spends the same amount of time doing the rest of it that he spent doing just the police, so it's twice as much time, then I would think that would also be $100 and not $150.
$150.
Per service.
Per service.
I get a problem with that.
And if it doesn't need it, he won't mow.
Yeah.
It's, we don't know.
Well, no, that's the number of service.
But we don't have to use them, do we?
Yeah, he's our landscaping person.
I want justification for it to be hard and fast, $150. But we don't need to have that discussion tonight.
Exactly, so, here's what I would...
I don't want this motion to commit the $2,800 to him.
We're not making the motion, we're not committing anything.
So, let me, timeout here, this is a chair's timeout, it's in the rulebook, so, for those who are interested in diving into this deeper, I would ask that they do so offline, and we move on with the agenda tonight, and then, if we need to bring this back up later on, we can, but I actually think this is the best-case scenario, based on the fact that we have some question marks for 2018, once the construction finishes up. 2019, who's ever here in 2019, can worry about an extended contract or whatever.
And I'm okay with having it in the budget as an anticipated expense, dealing with particulars later, I'm okay with as well.
And that's all it is, is an anticipated expense.
Exactly.
We'll be paying close attention to it.
Exactly.
That's good, so, what else, Nancy?
All right, so basically, not too much went up, the biggest hike is the landscaping. We did, on the chemical toilets, put in, the transfer station had $1,000, we took it out of his budget, put it into this, so they're all coming out of general government.
Now, oil has gone down?
Oil price, it's a little bit like six cents higher this year than it was last year, but, again, this is a guessing game, 'cause we don't know, I'm assuming the new fire station is propane, Larry, so they won't be doing oil.
You'd be saving a lot on that.
Okay, so, we did decrease that by $5,000.
And then put some of it, some of it back into the propane?
Well, they just got the 2,000 tanks for the propane, and we, it's a dollar fifty a gallon, comes out to $3,500. We had 500, we're increasing it by 3,000.
Okay.
So, the oil's going down, but the propane's going up.
Yep.
The salaries went up a little bit due to the pay increases that were given, and that, again, is an estimate, 'cause, you know, it varies. I think the only other thing that we kept in there is underwater testing, on the last page, that is including the MS-4 contract. We do have an encumbrance to carry over $11,000 from this year, because the work is being done, but it won't be completed till January, and the new permit comes out in June, I believe, so, we're not sure what other testing in that that we have to do, so we figured we'd keep that in there.
And, this is a federal or state requirement?
Federal.
Federal, right? It's a federal requirement, so it's not like we have a choice in the matter.
Yep.
Should we fail to do it, it comes with a hefty daily fine.
Exactly.
And we went up a little bit on the winter, because obviously, we've had still storms in now, which we didn't last year, and we're over expended, so we kinda went, on the average, went from seven to 10, so, but other than that, I think everything else has pretty much stayed the same.
Mr. Chairman, I would move...
Your bottom line is what?
It is...
I'm not there.
Yeah.
An increase of $22,340.
Get a click into the cell.
About $23,000 increase, and that's basically the landscaping.
$24,300?
Mm-hmm.
Expand column E.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to include the general government building budget in the proposed town budget.
I will second, and I just wanna make it clear that of that $22,000, $19,000 is grounds maintenance, which is why we spent so much time on it.
Right.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that was a tough one.
It is a tough one.
What's, do you have the next one too, Nancy?
The financial, is that?
Other government.
Other government.
Other government, all right, now, we did most of this, the two big ones that you need to review and vote on is the insurance, that has gone down, because the health insurance went down, I'm sorry, this is the property liability, that has also gone down, so, we're down $9,000 from last year, so I think that's a good thing.
Now, that's an interesting amount to budget for unemployment, it's not a round number.
Well, we don't round them off, we try to stick as close to the number, we just don't put cents in there.
Yeah, 2017 was $4,000, 2018 is $23,62, there's a big difference between the rounding. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, it's a good thing.
It calculates, so...
It's a good thing, well, it shows we're trying to get as close as we can, I like it.
Absolutely, yep. And the second one, just while you're reviewing, is the personnel administration, which includes your dental, your health, your Medicare, your FICR, New Hampshire Retirement and Short-Term Disability, and that one also went down due to the health decrease. New Hampshire Retirement is always, you know, that always goes up, so, and it, it's based on pay increases as well.
Yep. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to include the other general government budget in the proposed town budget.
Second.
The only thing I would add is I guess it's budgets, right? Because it's, it's, these are, we're going to look at these all individually, right? So it's just a plural, but just a grammatical thing.
For all of the other, the personnel, legal, street lighting, etc.
The orphans. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's everybody?
And I believe all the others have been voted. The last page is just the bonds that we have, are the commitments for the, you know, purchases and stuff.
The rescue station and the lease...
That's mostly for me, for budgeting purposes.
Line 46, what's that for?
What is it Larry? I don't have...
A merrimac road principal PD building?
That's, that's the bond that we pay every year for the PD.
So financial administration?
That one, basically, it went up 5,000 and the most on that was the pay increase and the hiring of a backup bookkeeper. And also, a lot of the stuff, the equipment lease went down and we've added a couple little things in there for Wi-Fi and stuff like that, but basically it's, it's stayed pretty good. The town website went up, the license is that $400 now instead of 125 a year.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to include the financial administration budget in the proposed town budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Moving off of budgets, finish up encumbrances.
I have one here, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we had, we did fire, we have general government buildings encumbrances. Do you want to talk to these?
That one, I'm not really sure what we should do. We had talked about what we're doing, something with the roof that to Amesbury Road and...
Do I not have these?
Now, we still own that?
We still own that. And we tried, Diane tried to get some quotes last fall, last spring rather. We weren't really able to get any, but Bob was good enough to go over and give us an idea of what we thought the cost might be. So I reached out to Bob today and asked if we could get a written quote on that. And I also contacted another construction person to just, you know, see if we could get another price to see, you know. But we don't have to deal with this this year because my understanding is you have to pick a vendor and they're both over the 3,500 bid policy, so I don't know if you want to sign one of those. I'm thinking this probably wasn't a good idea.
I, I'm of the opinion that we should not encumber for replacing the roof. I don't see it as an emergency situation right now for that building. I mean, yes, it's old, yes, it needs to be repaired, but does it need to be repaired immediately?
It's not leaking a lot, is it?
We don't have any leaks, we don't have any collapses.
I'm not sure, what do you think Bob?
I know it was leaking when the police department was there, has anybody ever fixed it?
Yeah, they did, well, we did have some work done on it after that because I remember the paint bubbling up, the water was in it. We've had some work done, but Lisa suggested maybe putting blue tops on it for the winter and then maybe in the spring, see what we want to do. If we end up keeping that building, you don't want it to be destroyed.
No, you don't. However, I, I would rather plan for it than to rush into an expense for it.
Right.
So I want to see it go out to bid.
Yep.
Because it, it is almost $10,000. I want to see it go out to bid. I want to see somebody who wants a job come in with the, you know, the best possible price to do it. It's not just for us, but it's for the owner of that property just in case they come back and...
Yeah, because they can come back and get that and then...
They would have to pay.
And they would have to reimburse us.
Oh, they would have to pay the roof, okay.
So we need to do our fiduciary responsibility to ensure we're not paying more than we have to to fix it.
And the other suggestion was that maybe we sell it as a replacement.
Which one?
Did you only have one of these?
There's a couple in there.
They're clipped together.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we're moving off of the roof then. So top of the list, David's Heating and Cooling Furnace for Police Department.
We did get two quotes for the furnace. This is an emergency situation. Ron Lamir has gone over there and looked at everything and told the companies that were bidding on it exactly what they needed. Chief Jewitt can speak on this as well.
Ron Lamir has come to us about this before and we asked him to get the quotes on having it replaced because...
Yep, they were, they were put in, I think, in 87?
84, 85.
Yeah, something like that. So with the two quotes, these are two companies that do work in the town and Ron suggested that maybe the board go with David's Heating because even with the fuel credit that they will give us, up to $500 and the $750 credit overall, David's Heating is still less money. And I believe David's the one that Chad always used.
Yeah, it is.
They are the ones who have been maintaining.
Yep.
The other one is Palmer, which is 11K.
Yep.
So David, anybody want to make a motion?
I will move to encumber $8,345 for the purchase and installation, I assume, of the furnace by David Heating and Cooling.
Second.
I'm going to give that to Larry, I think he was quicker. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving down, we have KV Partners, 2017 Stormwater Master Plan.
Chair, I would move that we encumber $11,700 to be used to pay for the ongoing services of KV Partners in preparation of the MS4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, so we took care of those two roof ones. We have a pest end exterminators for the Marshall House chimney cap.
Oh, yeah, we got a price to have that done. I guess they had to build the cap.
Yeah, it's a customized cap because it's not a standard chimney, obviously, so...
And it just came in, but they're not sure when they'll be able to install it, depends on the weather and the slippery roof and so we'd like to encumber that $300. It was voted on by the board before, but like I said, it hasn't been done.
Do I make the motion to encumber the $300?
Is it 300 or 350?
300.
300.
Okay.
The Wildlife Control Service Agreement for Pest End Exterminator.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so moving along now, we're on to rec commission. And we have some encumbrances there for the, is that why you're here Steve, or you?
The DJ for Trunk and Treat wasn't paid yet?
Find out. Do you want to talk about the siding first?
Yeah, I am, I'm under, I mean, I'm not sure really how it works, to be perfectly honest, but all the work is being done this week and both, while speaking specifically about the siding, we have an invoice, or we will have an invoice to be paid next week. I think the last, the next manifest is the 26th.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yep.
And as long as it's on the 26th, then there's no encumbrance needed?
Right, correct.
So that is the plan for, I'm not sure that we need an encumbrance.
Do we want to do it just in case?
Yeah, because what if the invoice doesn't make it in?
Because the 26th is really...
Just in case of a snowstorm or something, they can't do it.
Okay.
Keep in mind, this is the 19th, the 25th, nobody's here.
Right.
Yeah.
The 22nd, nobody's here. So it's not a lot of days.
I want to make the motion to encumber...
Not a lot of days.
$885 to batter construction for vinyl siding for the shed at the town beach.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so that'll be, I would just, I would ask you to amend that one just to say in case. We should have wording in there like...
Do we actually need it since it's being encumbered for a specific purpose and a specific vendor?
What do you think?
If it's already paid for, then that purpose and that vendor invoice is already clear.
It will be null and void.
It'll be null and void just in that.
Okay, all right, as long as it's null and void, if it all comes together, then it's, you know. So the DJ is on here for trunk or treat?
Yeah, we're still waiting for the form to be filled out with the person's name and the mailing address and that type of thing. I don't know if it's attached to that, I don't have...
Kinda sorta.
So I know Patricia was working with Kim, who was going to be speaking with Vanessa to get that information, but to be safe, we want to get it paid out of this year. We thought we'd encumber it until we could get that.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to encumber $150 to Jason Paradise DJ for Trunk or Treat Community Event, which was held in 2017.
Second.
You said 150, right?
150, yes.
Okay, I thought you said 350.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Since I know it was already planned expense, no problem.
Is that it?
Well, I think the other item is revise requisition and invoice, but I think that is on the...
So our understanding is that the other work on the fence will be done this week, so Steve amended the requisition for the full amount. The check is on the manifest to be signed.
It's in the other folder, that's the records.
First, I think we need to rescind the work order 1877.
I think it's 2877, right?
It's on the, it's on the front page of the envelope?
That's what I was referring to when it was...
Okay, all right, good.
Taken away from me.
Matt wanted to see it.
So I would move to rescind requisition number 2877 in the amount of $2,959 for replacing fencing at the town beach.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we need a new one?
It went up $3,000?
I was just going to say...
Well, it was only 2/3 of the cost.
It was actually 50% of the cost.
50%, yes.
He originally wanted 50% upfront. We couldn't get that turned over quick enough, so he took the risk, bought the material and, but still wants us to get it in.
In that case, I would move that we sign requisition 2879 in the amount of $5,918 for the recreation commission for the replacement of a portion of the fencing at the town beach.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. And then the only other encumbrance was the police radios, which we have already taken care of.
Yep.
So going to, Chief, did you have anything else?
If you don't mind.
Yeah, while you're here.
Not adding anything, I just wanted to clarify something that was asked of me earlier. One of the things that we had looked at, that number 66658 under other, that's actually under my line item, that's my petty cash. Petty cash is used for tolls, it could be used for various different things. So I wanted to clarify what that other was. The other one that was like 1,800, I'm being told by the, by the secretary at the PD that that is for pest end, that's the exterminator that comes to the PD, and that kind of stuff is being billed to that line item.
No, pest end, wouldn't that be under general government as well?
It already passed its budget.
I thought it was.
I just wanted a clarification.
I thought it was, but...
Should be.
See, and that's another one of those things that shouldn't necessarily be there.
Right, I don't usually, we don't have the other, that's why I've never budgeted for it.
And...
But that's what I'm being told that it was taken up.
Well, like tolls, I, I would think would be part of travel.
It could be, but sometimes it's under petty cash, depending if it's a dollar, two dollars.
Are tolls free?
Depends what state you're in. But the petty cash is used for various different things, but I just wanted to give explanation to why those two are there. But the other, and I'll find out more on it, what I'm being told, it was some...
Usually you have your petty cash for whatever you need it for, but then when you actually expend it, you then determine which line item it belongs to. So I, I'm just saying, go back and look at those and see where they really belong.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in the other, the bigger one, the 1,800, that one, we'll figure out what is actually in there.
And if that's pest end, again, that may not have...
I don't think it is. Diane, I think that's already coming out of general government.
Because we get the bill.
We get the bills.
So maybe she's showing it on our end. I'll find out what it is on our end.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good.
We've got to have an invoice for it, but I don't have an other account.
Because I know as of today, Kim didn't know what that was for either, so, so yeah, it's like, let's just find out whether it's coming out of the wrong place.
That works.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving right along to the bids for printing of the town report. Do we have to open those, is that...
The big question is, we got two quotes for 300 books and 500 books.
One, two, three, just these four?
Obviously, 500 is a little bit more, but, you know, we put the books on the website, but we, I don't know, I'm thinking 300 might not be a good idea, only because we have elections next year and usually when we have elections, people grab books. I don't know, we're kind of leaving it up to you, what you think would be best.
I don't know, I, I, I still think they get picked up mostly when people are here.
Yeah, and next year they will be.
And they will be, it'll be a smaller turnout because it'll be a midterm election, but it'll still be an election, so...
However, quite frankly, Mr. Chair, if you go downstairs, there are still stacks of books.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll say 300.
Yeah, we, we had 500 this year, but like I said, there was no elections, so nobody was taking books.
Right.
But...
What do you mean, no elections?
There was no federal election.
No, state, well, federal election, yeah. But the other thing too I was thinking about is if we only get 300 books, by the time we pass them out to the attorneys, the auditors, the state libraries and all that, that's going to dwindle that down. 300 is not that many books.
So 400 is...
400.
Well, we got bids for three and five, so, and it's still under the 2,000 that I budgeted for.
I was just going to say...
$200 is going to break the bank?
No.
Isn't, is Select Print Solutions the same company we used last year?
No, we used Ram last year, but we used that company a couple of years ago. Did you get the correction on that for a page?
Yeah, it's three cents a page.
Three cents a page.
But it's still more, so...
On Ram.
I would almost, if it was me, I'd call Ram and I'd say, I'm only approved for 1650 for 500, and if you can do 1650, you have it. If you don't, I'll hang up now and I have to call this next vendor, Select Print and go with them.
It might be the 1785. Did Rams include color photo on the front of the town report? So there's it, so you would actually say 1785.
1785, yeah. That's what I would do. I guess that was a motion.
Yeah, I was like...
So what do you, who are you picking?
Call Ram.
Exactly, yeah, that's true, yeah.
I'm making a motion to approve purchasing the printing of 500 town report books not to exceed 1785.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So basically, we want to probably give Ram the opportunity to come in lower because they...
But isn't that defeating the purpose of a sealed bid? For bids?
Yeah, but we can...
It wasn't a sealed bid.
It wasn't a sealed bid, we never opened anything.
And we can still negotiate.
We still have the right to, the barter with them too.
So I guess I'm trying to figure out, Select Print is giving you the option to the price that you're looking for.
Yeah, my thing with Ram though is, is we had them last year and they did a good job. I think we had them the year before too.
You used them for all the bulletins for the fire...
Yeah, that's who it was. So just give them a shot. If they can't do it, no harm, no foul, and you just call Select Print, you know.
So at least you made that motion, right?
Correct.
Not to exceed 7...
Not to exceed 1785.
With a second by Jim. All right, two, one. All right, two, one.
Because I'm assuming that seventeen sixty-five is for five hundred, right?
Yes.
Yeah, seventeen eighty-five is for five hundred books.
Yeah.
Yep.
With a color page, right?
Yep. Okay, good.
All right, and then obviously you'll, not to go off on a tangent here, but you'll let us know what we have to do for, I have to write something, right?
I sent those memos out already, Matt.
I know, I saw it and then I didn't, I kind of did this with it. And then I realized, oh, wait, I have to do something, so. H. Transfer station holiday hours. One of my favorite subjects is holiday hours.
The transfer station hours.
Oh, yeah, so I was approached by Jack and Tom requesting the board if they can close this Sunday, Christmas Eve, the following Sunday, New Year's Eve, at, at two o'clock, which is an hour and forty-five minutes early, so they can prepare for the holidays with their families. Normally they close at three forty-five.
Jim?
And that would be without pay?
It's usually Jim.
We mentioned pay, but make that motion without pay.
Two o'clock is not New Year's Eve nor Christmas Eve. Two o'clock is the middle of the afternoon. It's not like we're asking them to work until eight o'clock at night and then go home and prepare.
All right, so that's a motion. So we can have a second.
But.
And then just vote on it.
But I, I.
Isn't this a movie?
I totally understand what Jim is saying here. However, when it came to the town buildings, say, last year and the year before, when Christmas, New Year's, Thanksgiving, et cetera, fell on a Thursday, they would ask to leave at two. They would not ask to leave at five. They would not ask to leave at four. They would ask to leave at two. And we would allow them to leave at two.
Forty-five minutes is not going to corrupt this.
So allowing them to leave at two, the Christmas Eve or the New Year's Eve on a Wednesday or a Thursday should be the same consideration, even though it's a Sunday.
Philosophically speaking, I still don't understand why we always have to discuss this topic. It's like, we, it seems like we discuss it for the last time every time. Like, we come up with a, with a policy and then here it is, we're discussing it again. My thing is, I, you know, it is a holiday, so leaving at two doesn't make that much of a deal to me. But I do, what Lisa's saying is, like, where we run into trouble is where we look at one, one entity in the town and do something for them. And then we realize, oh, my God, we have to do it for the others, you know? So what I'm wondering is, is if, in my recent memory, Christmas Eve was on a Wednesday, right? Which your normal close time here on a Wednesday is like?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock? I believe we made them stay until four o'clock.
Exactly.
I actually believe that because the town clerk tax collector's office was closing early and we had no say over that, we did allow the rest of the town hall to also close at that time.
What was that, when it was a Thursday?
However, they were required to take PTO.
Right.
Right, and I'm not saying, let's give them holiday pay for it.
Yep.
I am saying that closing two hours early on the New Year's Eve or the Christmas Eve, it's still going to be available for the town residents. Most of them are going to be busy with their last minute Christmas shopping or travel or whatever. That I don't see it's a big hardship. I don't have a problem with it.
Let's just take a vote on it.
Jim?
Possibly if this had been brought up much earlier in the year. However, it's four days to the implementation of the first one. Now, I'm one of those people, on Sunday afternoon, around three o'clock, I will be getting home and plan on taking, normally would take my trash to the dump.
Not this Sunday.
Luckily, I know. However, I'm not usually alone at the dump late on Sunday afternoon.
Right.
We have four days to let people know. Now, while it may be convenient for the people that work at the transfer station, the people that have loaded their trash into their vehicle and have gone to the dump to find it closed.
By the way, which I've often said, is the worst scenario.
Well, I was just gonna say.
In, in the world. I've, I've been there and I don't.
It's either, it's either Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve. You're trying to get the trash and you've got to get home, put people in the vehicle and go. No, now you have to go home and take the trash out of the vehicle.
But, but in their defense, it's not four days before because they asked early last week, but we had to wait, we had a board meeting.
A meeting. And another philosophical point here, the calendar doesn't sneak up on us. We really should be sketching out the calendar, like in January, and realizing that Fourth of July is on this day and we might have, I'm serious. Like, we, we really shouldn't be looking at Christmas, oh, yeah, Christmas Eve's on the twenty-fourth again. You know what I mean? Like, we really should have. You know what I mean?
Well, yeah. I say, let's go back and look at the meeting we had prior to Thanksgiving and see what we did for the day before Thanksgiving. Because town hall was closed Thanksgiving Day. See what we did for the day before Thanksgiving.
Town hall was open, just because some people leave it too. Others stay and work.
And the Christmas would have only come into play on 2015, not based on the calendar.
I'm, I'm really struggling here because on the one end, like, I can see a lot of people pulling up to the gate at, at three-thirty or whatever.
Not if you have a.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, two o'clock in the afternoon.
And at the same time, I understand, like, if, if I worked there, I would be like, you know, it's Christmas Eve. I'm getting pictures of, what's, what's his name?
Bob Cratchit.
Bob Cratchit, you know?
Listen, so how about if we compromise? I'll change the motion.
This is the biggest. I mean, New Year's Eve, I, I could see, but I, I'm really for the Christmas Eve.
We'll compromise. We'll give him Christmas Eve, two o'clock, New Year's Eve.
Hours as usual.
Hate to say no, but I'm not up for reelection this year, but.
But, no, I mean, New Year's Eve is just to go party. I, I don't think we should, you know, make special circumstances for partying. And that's what New Year's Eve is.
Baby steps here. New Year's Eve, not pulling the board, no one wants to touch New Year's Eve?
Well, I'll give New Year's Eve off. I don't care, but it's gonna, it'll get voted anyway.
But it sounds like we're getting head shakes.
New Year's Eve, what do they close, at four o'clock?
Three forty-five.
Yeah, it's still plenty of time to get home and start drinking.
Go party at eight o'clock till midnight.
So unfortunately, New Year's Eve sounds like it's off the table.
It's off the table, Nancy.
Okay.
Because you're gonna have to call Tom tomorrow.
Okay.
And then you, you have a motion for Christmas Eve?
Motion for Christmas Eve to close at two o'clock, an hour and forty-five minutes early.
Is there a second for discussion?
I will second that motion, and I would like to make sure that we post it first thing tomorrow morning on the website and out onto the community page to advise as many people as possible.
They could put it signed up Thursday and Saturday.
However.
People that go Sunday don't go Thursday. That's the problem.
Yeah.
People don't read Newton. I hate to say it, but they don't.
Exactly. And I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna hear about it as long as everybody's prepared to hear about it.
I'll be good with doing early on Saturday if we can do an all-call and let the town residents know that we will be closing early Sunday.
One of those alert now calls?
And again, just keep in mind.
The alert now call?
Right.
I'm okay with that, too.
So.
Just keep in mind, not everybody is listed on that all-call.
Right.
Which is why we will get the town website, so that whoever's subscribed will get that notice. We will post it to the Newton Community Facebook pages. And we will do the alert now. If, we will have.
A lot of discussion.
Majority.
We're gonna hear, but again, again philosophically.
Diane, we'll do website. I'll do Facebook.
Philosophically, I have great issue with the fact I always seem to be in here talking about holiday closings. The, as far as if this is a successful motion, how do they get paid?
This is without pay.
PTO.
So they have to use PTO?
Or no pay.
Or no pay, because they are part-timers. So if they want a full day's pay, they will have to use PTO or they can go without pay if they don't have it.
Right. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We got one nay. So, in all seriousness, I would like to see when we have some time freed up here. Maybe somebody present the holiday calendar. Maybe sometime in February, we can look at it.
That would be a really appropriate chart for the chart.
Just so we know, Christmas next year is on a Tuesday and the transfer station's open until eight?
Is it on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, it is.
It is, okay. The, so it is on, yeah.
So they're closed.
They're closed anyways.
All right, so.
Christmas Eve is on a Monday, though. So next is easy.
All right, so, the bank PTO request, we have one more, is that it?
Yes.
All right, this should be on your shared, Bank PTO Request is the file name. So this is, this individual's.
All right, this isn't banking. This is carrying over.
Right, and this falls in the criteria. It's during the first year of employment.
Exactly.
I have no prob, I would move to.
Hold on, let me read it. I think we need to have people start taking days off.
Are you all set now? Have you read it all?
Yeah, okay.
I have only one.
All right, there you go.
I got it.
I will move to allow, I believe we're supposed to give names.
I didn't think your computer was working.
Diane Moore into carry over sixty hours of unused PTO.
How much?
Sixty hours.
Six to zero.
I was looking at the forty-seven.
And I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent. Moving right along, looks like we're on to our, does somebody want to read J?
Mr. Chairman, per RSA thirty-one dash, sorry, thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of twenty-five dollars from Charlotte E. Setner to the Newton Food Pantry.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of one hundred dollars from James A. Marino to the Newton Food Pantry.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of eight hundred dollars from an anonymous donor.
Donors.
Anonymous donors to the Newton Food Pantry.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of four hundred twenty-five dollars from the Newton, yeah, sorry, from the First Congregational Church sent to the Newton Food Pantry.
Second?
Lisa, one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're moving on to N.
Snowplow policy.
So this is, you already approved this last time, but we didn't have the papers. So we just need to sign those.
Just signing?
Yeah.
All right.
Ready? So do we need a, we don't need a motion to sign?
No, you've motioned it last year, last week. Which, like I said, you just didn't have the paperwork.
So we're moving personnel?
Yeah, personnel policy has a few amendments. It is on the shared drive in the meeting folder for everyone to review some of the highlights for those who are interested. For the full-time PTO, we have converted from days to hours. It's the same, it equates to the same amount of time. We have not taken time away or added time for anyone. All we've done is taken one day to equal eight hours. So if they were qualified, eligible for ten days, we changed that to eighty hours. What this does is it makes bookkeeping more straightforward and it clarifies for the town employees that do not work eight-hour days as far as what PTO time is. So if they want to take a day for PTO and they happen to work a ten-hour day, no, they are, are not taking eight hours PT, or the day was eight hours. So it's like, oh, I'm taking one point two-five days of PTO for my ten-hour shift.
So the.
It was a nightmare.
This is the file, right?
Final Personnel Policy, twenty seventeen, twelve nineteen.
Mine's dated today.
Correct, and that's because we put the amended.
Right.
There were a couple of spots where we did not have the amended December nineteen on it.
The only concern I have is that sometimes with these amendments to personnel policies, I don't hear about them until I sit in this meeting and see them. So I don't have the time to review them. I would suggest.
That is the only change that you have not seen or heard about. The other changes, we discussed at our last meeting.
Because what I would do is, and this is just me personally, is I would email them out at least five days before and say, here's the policy we're going to look at Tuesday night. Here what, here's what the amendments are. We'll vote on them when we get there.
The policy committee made these changes last night, for the PTO hours.
Yep.
And like I said, the other changes were there. We reviewed, we, the board decided they wanted to take a little time to review those changes. So it was there and available for you to review. The only thing that has been added since that meeting two weeks ago is PTO hours changed, converted, not even changed, converted from days to hours. That's it, under full-time only.
I'd just like some time to digest.
You can vote in January if you'd rather.
Yeah, probably.
I was just hoping we'd get everything cinched up before the year end.
I mean, we can, if somebody wants to make a motion, we can.
And as it is, we, we just voted and approved carrying over hours of PTO. However, the personnel policy does not say anything about hours. It says days. So this forty-point-five hours of PTO is what, five-point-one or five-point-something days? Because to do apples to apples, and that was the problem. It's why we're converting to hours.
I'll move the adoption of the personnel policy with the current amendments dated nineteen December two thousand seventeen.
And I will second for discussion.
What's the discussion?
In case anybody wants to discuss it.
Anybody have any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Bob?
I didn't even get a chance to read them, so I'm gonna.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain, but we're all set anyway. Not abstain, I'm gonna be a nay. But you had three ayes, so we're good to go.
The only thing to do is convert days into hours.
That's what we did last night. And like I said, the other changes were done two weeks ago, which was presented two weeks ago and needed to be digested.
So that was the only personnel policy, right, for tonight?
Yes, that's it.
All right, so we have announcements? Hold on, let me click on this. Not just yet. All right. Effective November twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, the following employees have received a pay increase. Cheryl Saunders, Deputy Town Clerk Tax Collector from grade, what is that, fourteen? Step ten to grade fifteen? Step ten?
Yes.
Fire Chief John Alcaldino, a five percent increase. Aaron Mounsey for successfully completing the full-time.
Police academy.
Police academy.
Not fire academy.
If he did that, I'd be impressed. That's two academies in the same team.
Wasn't quite sure which one he was.
Full-time, Police Academy from grade twenty, step seven to grade twenty, step eight. And then Barbara White, Building Permit Clerk from grade, is that, six? Step seven to grade six, step eight. And those are just official announcements. We are, next, we have a blood drive coming up. Town Hall on January third at, from two PM to seven PM in this very room. So we encourage those to attend. Again, January third, two PM, seven PM in this room. All right, other business? I don't think we have any other business. So we'll move on to the manifest. Larry, you have those?
Yeah.
He's cutting to the chase there.
Make a motion to sign vendor manifest dated December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen in the amount of one million one hundred seventeen thousand twenty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. Of that, one million dollars goes towards the balance for the December school payment.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's everybody.
Make a motion to sign new fire rescue manifest dated December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and thirty-three sixty cents.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to sign payroll manifest for pay period eleven twenty-six, two thousand seventeen Make a motion to sign payroll manifest for pay period 11/26/2017 to 12/9/2017, with the payday of 12/14/2017.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion to sign Veterans Tax Credit for MAP 5-4-9-2, effective tax years 2018. Yeah, you were supposed to read those, I didn't fire you.
You took Bob, so maybe Bob can take some others?
That's the...
There's no more?
Well, that's it, those are crossed out.
No, but nobody made the motion to, for the tax credit?
Second.
You made the motion, but no second.
Second.
Second, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
All in favor is aye.
Aye.
Sorry.